All right, I'd like to go ahead and welcome everybody at this time to the September 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We do not have the minutes to approve at this time, so we'll go ahead and jump into the meeting. The first item to consider, thank you, Emily. The first item to consider is SD 1932. And who's got that one? Mike?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Mike Jeffries, City Planner for the City of Fairhope. Before you, we have a four-lot minor subdivision. It's a public hearing at the request of Reed Loper and Cade McMurray, owners and applicants, for the four-lot minor subdivision. The property is located on the west side of South Section Street, approximately 500 feet south of Twin Echo Court, and is approximately four and a half acres big. The subject property is outlined in black on the left-hand of your screen, indicated with the zoning map, and on the right-hand is just an aerial. The property is currently wooded and does not have any structures on it. It is an unzoned piece of property. Here is a snapshot of the plat that you received copies of, and I'll just draw your attention to the front setback. Per county revision and comments from the county, they required a 60-foot front setback on the plat that was indicated, included in your packets showed a 40-foot. That has now been moved further to a 60-foot as per county requirements. So the subject property is not zoned, but is in Fairhope's ETJ. It has to go through the subdivision regulations and is a minor subdivision and has been reviewed accordingly. This subdivision does not propose any type of improvements, any infrastructure. Therefore, a lot of the requirements such as a tree protection plan, a landscape plan, and other criteria for a major subdivision that does have new roads was not required. The storm water runoff, the same existing flow patterns will remain, so nothing is going to be changed. This subdivision is more drawing lines on, lines on the plat and divided it into four parcels where it was currently one. All the proposed lots meet the minimum requirements for set for width and for square footage. And where it was applicable, they meet all the approval standards. It's not applicable for some of these standards that because it's an unzoned piece of property.
Are there any water retention that comes up on this with building permit?
No, sir. Right now, at the building permit stage, each, each lot would have to control its own water and not be able to flood downstream that's neighboring. But at the building, they don't really, they don't require a retention-detention, but it would be something to make sure that any owner that was proposing a structure is not going to flood. Depending on the use of the property being unzoned, we can't regulate the use of the property, so we don't know that if it's going to be a single-family use or if it will be a commercial use.
Okay.
But staff's recommendation is for approval of SD 1932. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions for you. And Reed Loper, the owner and applicant, is here tonight along with Seth Moore, the engineer of record, to answer any questions that I may not be able to.
Any questions for staff at this time? If not, I'll go ahead and ask the developer to come up and make his presentation. For Seth, do you have anything to add to that? I could open the public hearing and then see if anything comes back up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything to add. I mean, they've got an existing sidewalk out there already. And again, they are proposing residential. And of course, on the plat, we did put a note on there that it must meet ALDOT, I mean, not ALDOT, AIDOM regulations, so...
There's no doubt where the water goes on that, is there?
No.
Is none of that set any kind of flood zone or anything?
No. It is not.
Any questions for the developer?
I've never, is it, do you frequently find gun barrels for a...
Every now and then, yes.
I've never seen that on a subway before.
You know, back in the 30s and 40s, they used whatever metal they could find.
Well, stay put. Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead, thank you, Seth. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. This is the property on Section Street, basically across from the Haven. Does anybody wish to ask any questions to the developer or make any comments at this time? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Maybe we approve the subdivision?
I've got a motion that we approve the subdivision. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. If the motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is SD 1933. Buford, I see you've got this one.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioners, this is a first of two routine final, final plats on today's agenda. We'll begin 19- 19.33 Pine Wood Phase Two. Commissioners, we will very briefly refresh the commission's memory on this because it is a final plat and the approval was many months ago. Subdivision final, so this final plat is Pine Wood Phase Two. You'll note the site right there, south of Manly Road, major subdivision. The original preliminary plat was approved October 1, 2018. This is 18 lots and 7.42 acres. You'll see the aerial photograph right there showing its location. And for the commit, to refresh the commission's memory, this was also a conditional annexation, so this was annexed into the city of Fairhope. You see the parent parcel right there. Sawgrass Consulting is the engineer of record. Mr. Ursula Godwin is with us here today. You see the background information right there on that slide. Again, some additional background information here on the original for some housekeeping purposes. What I wanted to call to the commission's attention is that this is actually a re-subdivision of Lot 7 of the prior Pine Wood subdivision, which all of those lots front on Manly Road. So there's some language in the plat that describes that. And again, the historical information right there where we considered the preliminary plat, but just to refresh the commission's memory, that all of the lots are at least 10,500 square feet and at least 75 feet wide. So that qualifies for R2 zoning. This is the actual plat that we're asking consideration today. Again, you note at the top of the plat, a Pine Wood subdivision Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Lot 1 Pine Wood subdivision Phase One. And so staff's recommendation is approval of case number SD 19.33. We do have some routine conditions of approval, Commissioners. Installation of sidewalks in the common areas, and that is, that was in progress at the time that this staff report was written. That was something that was considered and discussed during the preliminary plat approval. The punch list items are in progress. And another housekeeping item that we do very routinely on final plats is commencement of warranty on the sanitary sewer lift station shall occur after initial startup and approval by the City of Fairhope Water and Sewer Department. Also, there is a minor edit on the plat that it's reflecting Silage Drive. We want to make certain that it reflects Silage Drive on the plat, so a minor edit before it is brought for signature and recording. There's a potential that that street name may be desired to be changed because there are some similar sounding street names in that area, but for the purposes of final plat approval, we want to make certain that it's edited reflects Silage Drive. And so Commissioners, I am happy to answer questions for staff. And again, Mr. Ursula Godwin is here on behalf of the developer as well.
Any questions for Buford? If not, I'll go ahead and let the developer come up at this time.
I guess were the sidewalks installed before August 30th? And they just didn't make the report?
I'll, I'll pass that question on to Mr. Godwin. I was not able to visit the site between the time we wrote the staff report and today.
Ursula Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. So to answer your question, the sidewalks are being worked on right now. I just left the site. Some weather last week, I got them behind, and so they're in the process, they were actually cutting grass and things to finish the portions through the common areas or that get to the common areas. But some of them have already been addressed from those comments. But any other questions y'all may have, we're definitely happy to answer.
Ursula, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Could they have gotten the transformer any closer to the wet well of the lift station?
You know, I'll be honest with you, the power out there is, has been a hurdle, for sure. It's both, so that site served by both Riviera and EMC, and getting it in there has been tough. And to answer your question, it doesn't surprise me that they put it that close.
I mean, how can they move it?
I can definitely ask.
It's just too close to the...
I can contact Wes Abrams and see what they, what they think about it.
Is it to try to get it on the backside of the right-of-way, or, I mean, is there, can they move it to the lot line?
We can def, we can definitely ask them. You know, we can definitely ask them to do that, you know.
I mean, I'm guessing the lift station was there first, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, have you seen it?
Mm-hmm. It's tight.
I mean, there's no way, and I, I hope we don't ever have to deal with digging up, you know, or replacing the wet well.
Right, no, I definitely understand. The, the power there to the lift station, for some reason or another with Riviera, was after they had pulled all the conduit for, you know, the primary services for the residents. So I'm not sure, you know, what exactly or why they did it that way, but they, they were slow on getting it to the lift station and, you know, but I will contact Wes Abrams with Riviera and see what they can do about it.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Ursula. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the Pine Wood Phase Two? If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn the meeting back to the commissioners. Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, should we make the moving the transformer another condition?
I don't know. I'm not a...
Richard?
Has, has a panel been set for the lift station?
That I'm not sure of as far as the panel goes. Personally, I don't have that, I don't have a problem with it being a condition, but unfortunately, I can't speak for Riviera and their willingness to move it, so...
I mean, is there a drawing that showed the transformer like that? Because I don't, I don't remember seeing anything like that.
No, I mean, they don't, they don't provide, you know, in terms of electrical layout, you know, that's something they do in-house as well as EMC, and they don't really provide that to us in a sense of being able to put it in the, in the plan set since they do all their work themselves. You know, they are notorious for, you know, putting cabinets and transformers and things on top of property corners and whatnot, so, you know, they sort of do as they wish, I guess you'd say. So, you know, in terms of making it a condition or not, I really don't know. I mean, I, like I said, I think that may tie the developer to something he may not be able to make happen because it's, you know, it's not his cabinet or, you know, whatever the case may be, but we definitely will contact him. And I have a feeling that they'll be willing to come out and talk to us because I'm sure they don't want the inconvenience of the, you know, lift station either because you don't want the inconvenience of a transformer.
Well, I mean, if we have to move it to do something with the lift station, I mean, there's no way that whoever's being served by that transformer is going to have power.
That's right.
And so if they're going to have to do it anyway, potentially one day, they might as well do it now before we have to get to that point.
That's right. No, I agree with that. I agree. I was in the process of texting those guys right now, so...
And I, I've worked with them. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm still friends with them, I think.
At least for right now.
Is it not, is it not a danger issue? Well, you know, not, not until we have a problem with it, but we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve case SD 19.33 Pine Wood Phase Two.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I, I would second that if we can make that contingent upon us working out an issue with the lift station out there and the transformer being that close to it.
Okay.
If you can amend the motion that way.
I amend it to where it's, to where it's, do you want the amendment to say that it has to be moved, or rather, I think it'd be better to say that...
I think...
That it's satisfactory to the public...
Yes.
Utilities director.
That's perfect.
Is that, okay.
Yep, I agree.
Because I have a motion to approve with the transformer being, getting the public...
Public utilities.
Public utilities approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Teachers Retirement RSA has a final plat approval for a three-lot subdivision on Polo Place. I see Buford's name is on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as Chairman stated, a routine final plat approval. You'll see the location of the subject properties, both the zoning map. This is located in unzoned Baldwin County, but within Fairhope's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and therefore it is before this planning commission, was before this planning commission for preliminary plat approval, which was granted, and is back before this commission for final plat approval. You'll see from the aerial image on your right, this is a function of one of the golf course facilities owned by RSA. You'll see the location information there. One thing to refresh the planning commission's information, for the planning commission's information, is that this was originally a Hutchison, Moore, and Rao project, and because of their absorption into Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, so Goodwood Mills and Kaywood is actually the engineer of record firm for this, for this project. The basic property information is shown on the screen right here. We won't review it line by line, line by line. What I will call to the planning, to this planning commission's attention is, is that as a function of the approval of the preliminary plat, we actually granted a waiver from the lot width and lot area requirements on this subdivision, which the, the positive effect with that was allowing to create some common area. So that's why some of the lots are not 100 feet wide and some of the lots are not 15,000 square feet, as is normally required.
Sorry, our screens aren't working, so we really can't see that.
Okay, so Commissioners, I apologize for that. Did not realize your screens are not working. However, I don't believe we can fold in one of our larger screens.
We can push the top, we can, we have the top left button right there. It'll take it a minute to one way.
Okay.
There we go.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner, sorry about that. Just to reiterate, the lot size, as we discussed, was a function of the preliminary plat approval, and that is reflected in the lot sizes you see on screen, also in your packet. And like we said, unzoned Baldwin County. All these lots are fronting on a paved publicly maintained road. Polo Ridge Boulevard, of course, is existing. And Commissioners, the reason this was a major subdivision, because even though we're only talking about three lots, there was a bit of infrastructure that had to be installed, so it did trigger the requirements of a major subdivision. This is the actual plat for which we're asking, we're requesting approval today. We, it's a bit faint on your screen, but the common area that was added as a function of the preliminary, preliminary plat approval is shown in light green and called out by the call-out balloon you see here on your screen. This is, this screen is basically, basically all the background information that we, that we talked about earlier. This is a carryover from the preliminary plat process. If there's any specific questions, we can delve into this to answer any questions that's necessary. I will refresh the commission's memory that this is an RSA property, and we talked about the lot width and lot size just a moment ago. So therefore, the staff recommendation is approval of case number SD 19.34 for Polo Place subdivision. I do have a very simple housekeeping condition of approval, and I just want to make certain that via condition of approval, we memorialize the final plat approval of the waiver of the lot size and lot width that was approved by the planning commission on its March 12, 2019 meeting, and that was case number SD 19.13. I have, will be happy to answer questions to staff, Commissioners.
There's no one here in the audience from Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, is there? Oh, there is, okay.
Yes, we do. Have Mrs. Amanda Thompson here today.
Amanda Thompson.
Hey. All right, thanks. Do you have any thing you want to add to this at this time?
I don't. I'm here in place of Tim because he had to be in another meeting, but if you have any questions for me, I can certainly try to answer them or text them.
I've got one person signed up to speak.
Okay.
And then I'll see if anybody else wants to add anything, and then see if you can answer the questions that are brought up.
Okay. I will talk.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Paul, you're on the list to speak.
Thank you. I live at 17674 Hitching Post Circle, which is Lot 61 directly to the west of Lot 1 Polo Place subdivision, right, almost dead center from north to south. And it is correct, the, the developers did agree to doing the, the common area, however, it really wasn't a fashion of common area. We met with HMR and pleaded for a green belt slash water runoff program because it's hard to tell, this is not a contour map, but this property slopes from the, excuse me, the east to the west directly into Lot 60, 61, and 62 of Polo Ridge, I mean, I'm sorry, Point Clear Stables where we reside.
And we do have a tip-o map in our...
Okay. Well, you can see on the contour maps that all of that water flows directly into our neighborhood. And so in our discussion with HMR at the time, they went back to RSA, and RSA agreed to provide a 20-foot green belt slash swell that would run from the road of Polo Ridge Boulevard, which is the, the far south corner of Lot 1, all the way directly to the north, down into the golf course. And, and it was determined or approved, hence making the smaller lots and, and to be able to fit the green belt slash swell in there for water runoff to keep it off of us and increase the amount of water flow that's coming to us. Well, they built it, and I can tell you that it's working great. However, there's nothing in place right now for maintenance of this, and because I can tell you because I'm maintaining it, and I've talked to the golf course. Of course, they're not directly responsible because they feel of it as a piece of the subdivision simply because it is a considered common area, so it's not part of the golf course. It's part of the real estate division, and that was my conversation with Neil Frazier this morning. This swell, you know, I pull limbs out of it, I keep it cut all the way to the golf course, and I'm not going to keep doing that. If they built it, someone needs to maintain it, or otherwise it's not going to work. And we'll be here 10 years from now filing suits against this subdivision because of all the water that's dumping on us at the time. And we're just asking that someone be held to, accountable to maintain this.
Buford, while Paul is up there, isn't there, when we have owners associations, don't we require a, you know, the document showing the owners association is set up to maintain common areas prior to approval of these?
And I don't know if they would form, they won't form one yet until you get homeowners in there. So now it's just the developer. So currently, the property belongs to the developer. When we go through a subdivision where typically when we have a subdivision, it's, it's this simple, Commissioners, is that actually the engineer, when they provide us drainage calculations, will actually give us a document, and on the face of that document, they give us their, engineer stamp, their engineer certification, and actually put a, put a language on there that says a homeowner's association is required to be formed, and that the HOA or POA is responsible for maintenance of those facilities. Now, this is a minor subdivision where we don't normally encounter that, and in addition, because you have a 12-acre, you have a 12-acre existing golf course to absorb all the drainage. However, if the planning commission feels it's prudent and necessary to reflect that as some sort of condition of approval, that would certainly be in order.
Well, I think it's small, you know, it's not a huge area, but on the other hand, if I'm a neighbor sitting there next door, you know, I mean, I don't, well, unlike Paul, I enjoy mowing the yard, so I might not mind it much. But the principle of the fact is, is I totally agree with what he's saying, that he's not responsible, and somebody should be responsible. They ought to either have to, A, give it to the golf course, or B, they ought to have an owners association to mow it. It shouldn't be Paul's job to mow it unless he just...
Well, I just keep it maintained. Keep the limbs out of it as it should be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
No, no, I'm done.
I think for the situation we find ourselves right now with a minor subdivision, this might probably be, probably a prudent action would be to reflect a note on the plat regarding, regarding the, regarding the maintenance of the, of the swell in the common area. Reflect that as a note on the plat, and in that way, we have some mechanism of enforcement and responsibility until another entity of RSA or whomever may be the subsequent owner of that common area can maintain it.
So you're saying, I mean, because I'm, I'm struggling with whether or not three lots would typically have an HOA, so you're saying we could require the developer to be responsible.
The develop, yeah, the developer of the property.
If you've got two lots, you can have a HOA. I mean, if you've got two lots with a common area...
I guess you can, but it seems kind of silly, I mean, it's not for me or his side, but it seems, it's kind of silly when you have somebody maintaining it in a gigantic golf course right next to it.
Well, that is, and Commissioners, that's a great question, and I think what happens is, for the sake of time when we're in meetings, we sometimes don't go that far into the weeds, but a lot of times on minor subdivisions, because of their size, drainage is usually to an existing right-of-way where we don't have to get into reviewing and approving drainage calculations. So the section of the subdivision regulations that governs and triggers documents on HOAs and POAs is not a matter of review.
My, my point on this is, I mean, there's going to be 35-foot tall privet in 11 years if nobody's out there, you know, mowing it, bush hogging it, spraying it, or whatever the, you know, appropriate measure is at that time.
Exactly, exactly. So I think, I think that's a routine housekeeping type of, of condition of approval to reflect as a note on the plat.
Is that something that y'all can handle?
I'll also say one more thing, too, real quick. But not only would it be a part of the subdivision, it would also have to be a component of the golf course because the lot, the, the common area stops at Lot 62, right in the middle, and that swell continues on to a catch basin at the bottom of the hill that it has to get to. So you've got the subdivision that's got part of the swell, and then you've got the golf course where they made the rest of it that it feeds into, and if this stops up back on the subdivision, it's going to be pointless. So it's got to be maintained on basically two sections of property.
Sir, while you're up here, do you live on the second or third lot on Hitching Post?
It's Lot, it's Lot 61, it's the second one. Basically dead center.
It looks to me like there's a contour 50 on there, and then on what would be inside your private, it looks like there's already a swell that's there. Is that not right?
Well, it was, it was there. It was coming through ours, and, you know, we, we started building before we knew this was even going to happen. When they came in to, to propose dividing this, it was going to create further runoff because more hardscape, less, you know, less permeable area. And when we went to HMR, that was Scott Hutchison's comment to me was, "We will not throw any more water on you that's going on now. We'll direct all of that back to the golf course." And that was his quote to me.
And the reason I'm asking, because it looks like there may be an easement on your subdivision for drainage, and I'm wondering who would maintain that in your subdivision?
Where is that?
I'm sorry?
There is no easement in our subdivision right there.
But is this just the drainage that was built as part of the subdivision?
No. No, because my house backs up to the property line of the subdivision.
But if I'm reading this contour right, there is a swell that is inside your property on the backside of the subdivision. It looks like this one's paralleling.
Okay, I don't have that contour map in front of me, so I'm not sure what it is you're looking at.
Yeah, it, it looks like the low point is on the property line for a little ways, and then kind of curves inward.
In looking at this, the way the property slopes, it does that. Right. All right, I'm here, neighbor and neighbor, and by the creation of this swell, this property, this water that is flowing off of this now goes into this and channels down to the golf course where they built the catch basins, carry all of that water off of, coming off of this property and not coming to us anymore. Because it was causing, every time we had a rain, half of this was sliding off the hills. The yard was going out in the road. So they, it was just going to make it worse by the development, and that's what HMR agreed to do. Go back to RSA and ask them to consider doing this green belt slash swell to carry the water back on the golf course.
the water back on the golf course.
Yeah, I understand all that. I'm just saying it looks like there's already, there was an existing swell there at one time that wasn't very well maintained either. You may not be having the problem...
Well, but that was on RSA's property, not ours.
No, can you come up here for a second?
Yeah.
And I don't even know if this is relevant, but I was just going to show you what it comes down to. Take that. Looks like it's...
No, it's not. I don't know what that is, but...
Well, the way that the property...
Okay. Well, I mean, these people's yard is level coming up to here and same as mine, same as this one right here. These neighbors, these are two, their property's level coming up, it's property.
Okay, so that's not, that's not...
I mean, it might be on here, but it's not there, it's not like that.
And then right up there.
Yeah.
So Buford, what is your suggestion again?
Chairman, Chairman Commissioners, since we are talking about multiple pieces of property and we had this, you know, this question was not provided to staff prior to the meeting, and I'd hate to have, take action, I'd hate to take action without knowing the implications on different pieces of property. So I think probably the safest move would be to table it to the next meeting.
You think that rather than putting it on the plat as far as...
I'm comfortable with having a note on the plat.
I mean, if we table it, you know, I mean, one thing...
I'm comfortable with having a note on the plat, but if there's any trepidation, based upon the testimony we've heard, if there's any trepidation on the planning commission's part, I certainly, certainly respect and understand...
I mean, this is something that, you know, this is not the last time we're going to see this. Because, you know, the reason that, one of the big reasons that the, you know, Grand Hotel did not come to the city limits is they don't know how long people are going to play golf and they don't know if at some point they're going to convert one of the golf courses into subdivisions and, you know, the amenities, i.e. the swimming pools and the golf courses are so expensive that they, well, like the more people they have paying dues, you know, the more profitable that'll be to the retirement system and I get that.
Sure.
But, you know, when you look around, as Paul can tell you and anybody who drives through there, I mean, they're looking at developing every nook and cranny and that's fine. If they've got the right to do it, that's absolutely fine. But on the other hand, you know, it's not right for the people that are in there to have, you know, kudzu next door to them or 30-foot tall privet. You know, people need to be maintaining, you know, the little slivers here and there. I mean, this is one, of course, they didn't necessarily have to do it and they set that up, you know, to help the neighbors, so I hate to...
We're talking about the same owner, right? Like if we required the developer to maintain it, that's the same, the developer's the same person that owns the golf course.
Development, and they're all RSA, so...
So it's not two different people, that's a pretty...
I have a question as far as how do we enforce an HOA on a developer if there, no telling how long this takes to develop, how quick they get people to purchase these? We're talking maybe five, seven years. How do we enforce a HOA on a developer?
That is not an easily answered question. The short answer is, is that because most of Fairhope falls within an MS4, a municipal separate storm sewer permit area required by ADM, there are certain enforcement mechanisms the city can utilize in the enforcement of making certain that drainage systems are functioning properly.
And there are subdivision regulations that they're not supposed to be able to get a building permit until they certify. It's supposed to be certified at this time, perhaps on the plat, that an entity has been established to maintain the common areas and any stormwater infrastructure in those common areas.
I can tell you a subdivision that my family has down in Point Clear, you know, we set up the HOA, but as the developers, we were the, basically the owners of the HOA until it's turned over to the unit owners and it still hasn't been turned over and we're talking 17, you know, 13 years we've been maintaining, but in the next year it'll be turned over, but it can be...
But in the meantime, the developer is the one who, somebody's doing, somebody is maintaining it.
Yes, of course.
Commissioners, I think, and forgive me for not instantly coming to this conclusion, but here's, here's, let me, let me supplement my recommendation. What I would submit to this commission is that as a condition of approval, that the engineer's certificate that we typically see on both plats and drainage calculations is as a condition of approval, that the plat prior to recording, plat that's given to us also include the engineer's certificate for the storm sewer, storm drainage system.
But that's not a maintenance...
There needs, if you're asking, there needs to be a statement on the plat that this, that the developer or some other entity is going to be responsible for these common areas.
Correct, both, both of those statements, yes.
Okay, so one, that the developer is responsible for the common area, and what is the other?
That the engineer's certificate of the drainage system design appear on the plat as well.
If they want to form a HOA or some other legal entity to take that management or maintenance responsibility into the future, that's permissible.
So number one, the developer responsible for common areas and number two, engineer certificate be on the plat?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that, I think that's sufficient on both, on both the technical and the legal side to get us going.
Okay. Does that sound, you got that?
Yeah, yes, sir, I've got that.
Okay.
I'll let Tim know and then if he has any questions, he can just call you.
Okay.
So then, what does that mean for him? So he'll add that note and then he has to come back next time?
Yes, no, no, Amanda, so we'll incorporate this as conditions of approval and then that is wording that Tim is quite familiar with. And then what I'll do is give him a courtesy notification of what we did during this meeting and it's something he's familiar with and is done on other subdivisions. It's a little bit, it's a little bit odd to do it on one of only three lots, but it is something that is a standard requirement for drainage. So not a, it's taken us a long time to describe something that's actually very simple.
Okay, so we'll make these changes and then bring that to you.
Correct.
And if they'd rather just turn it over to the golf course, I don't think anybody would have, Paul, you wouldn't have any heartache.
They'd maintain it as a golf course.
I mean, I think if they turned it over to the golf course rather than have just a little look there, I don't think anybody would care. I think the main thing that we care about is that it doesn't, that it's not 35-foot taller, you know, proven kudzu.
It just works, yeah.
That's all we care about, somebody's...
I can understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have not officially closed the public hearing at this time. I assume, does anyone else want to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting back over to the commissioners.
Should it be a drainage easement as part of the whole thing too that gets us all the way to the inlet?
I don't understand what drainage...
Well, the common area doesn't...
The swell in the common area that would be...
Right. But doesn't, but it doesn't extend all the way to the...
Intentionally to be maintained by this entity.
But it doesn't extend all the way to the drain inlet that is on the other property. Should there be a drainage easement for the whole thing I'm saying that gets it from the road to the drain? A drainage easement to the, what is it, going to be a property owners association?
Well, the, that's actually, that's a good point, Richard, that's a good point, Commissioner. I think the only thing there is that because a great deal of that, once it reaches the golf course, is going to sheet flow and disperse through the golf course. I don't know if that drainage easement is necessary.
It looks like it's going to flow onto the properties that are three lots down in front of you, not, I mean, we're protecting you maybe, but your neighbor down the street's not protected the way it looks like.
If they give cut swell all the way to golf course...
Yes, sir.
Does it terminate with any kind of an inlet or an infiltration area or is it just going to the golf course?
I'm sorry.
I guess the topo map doesn't take us all the way down to the inlet?
I thought you described the future of the end.
No, sir. No, sir. I'll show you right here if you want to see it. All right, this doesn't depict that lot. That lot actually stops right here. It's right dead center of this lot right here, so Lot One cuts off about right there. All right, so that, the corner of that common area stops there. So from here all the way to here is where it's a cut, additional cut swell where they carved a gully off from there all the way to here. And then here they built a catch basin to catch all of this water coming in. So technically, the subdivision would stop right there. So then you've got the same amount of distance from here to here is here to here. Is that it's your question?
So there's a catch basin at the end of it?
Yep.
So, okay.
Yeah, because they took that catch basin here and piped it underground all the way, flows through there and it dumps into Point Clear Creek right there.
Lee, Chairman, there is a note on the plat already that says a 15-foot utility and drainage easement along the subdivision perimeter, side, and rear boundary lines.
So there's, there is a note on that already, Richard. Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion and we've got the two items that Buford would like added, is developer responsible for the common areas, number one, and number two, engineer's certificate be on the plat. Are two items that I think we need to add to any motion.
I make a motion to approve case SD 19.34 with the two approved conditions or the two conditions that we're adding.
Okay.
So three conditions total.
Developer responsible for the common areas, engineer's certificate be on the plat, and what is the third?
The staff recommendation had one.
On screen right now, Commissioners.
Okay, and also to memorialize in the final plat approval waiver of lot size and lot width.
So approve staff recommendations of number one and then the two that we came up with.
I'm sorry to interject, but that description of an easement is along the boundaries of this subdivision, so if it is an issue that it's connecting to drainage that's not on this property, it doesn't appear that the extension is protected in an easement. It may be beyond what we can do now, but...
I don't know how we can put an easement on adjoining property though.
Yeah.
With common ownership.
That's the point, it's the same owner.
Yeah, you have common ownership.
They know what they're doing.
Okay.
They're developing this subdivision and directing that water coming off that swell is something that we have out there.
Okay.
All right, so we've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Tim.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is SD 1935. All right, Mike's got this one.
All right, this is another minor subdivision similar to the first case we heard tonight. It's a public hearing at the request of Keith Glines, the owner and applicant for a three-lot minor subdivision of PPIN number 208259 and PPIN number 310478. This property is located on the north side of Bishop Road between County Road 13, south of Greeno, and South Greeno Road near their Fairhope Airport. Little bit of a typo there. It's real close to the Fairhope Airport, north of Bishop, in between 13, and the applicant wishes to divide the property into three residential lots with a common area around an existing lake. The applicant has also provided a letter from Baldwin County exempting it from the county's subdivision regulations. Up on the screen, you'll see the location of the property. As I said, it's right immediately adjacent to the M1 property of the airport and surrounded by current R1 zone property. And the aerial on the, or the aerial on the right, you can see the current lake where it's going to be the common area. Here's the copy of the recorded plat. They're going to be accessing this lot, these lots via easement. There's currently an easement to get to this property that's being subdivided and they'll be extending that 30-foot easement out to access lots 1, 2, and 3 and the common area. So it's a minor subdivision that has been reviewed accordingly and it meets the county regulations and received exemption as long as they have access with an easement not less than 30 feet in width, which it does have. Fairhope's regulations require that all lots front upon a paved publicly maintained street and the applicant has requested the appropriate waiver for that. And they wish to utilize a 30-foot ingress and ingress drainage and utility easement to access those three lots that are in the back. As far as the approval standards that are in the criteria of the subdivision, the first two were not applicable because it's not zoned by the city of Fairhope, but meets all the other criteria for that. Staff recommends approval of SD 1935 contingent upon recommendation of the approval for the waiver request from Regulation Article 5, Section E.3.0A, which is the approval, which is the section that talks about having to front upon a paved publicly maintained road. And staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight. Dewberry Engineers is the engineer of record and Mr. Steve Humphrey is with us tonight that can answer any questions as well.
Mike, that may not be the worst map we've ever had, but it might be. I went out there and I couldn't find it. I didn't see a sign out there and I couldn't find it when I drove out there.
That's via, that's a law, it's an easement, it's not a paved road to get back. It's, if you look up on the screen on the zoning map and on the aerial on the right, it's just a small, it's a dirt road that takes you back to access this piece...
So when I take a left off of Greeno onto Bishop Road, and Bishop Road is going due east at the time...
Yes, sir.
And then it makes a 90-degree to go south, and then it makes a 90-degree to go east, and then a 90-degree to go north, and a 90-degree to go east. In which section is that in?
It's after you pass the airport and not quite to 13.
Pass the airport and then it's on the right-hand side?
It'd be on your left, it's on your left-hand side. It's on the north side of that section of Bishop right before you get to County Road 13. It's almost the County Road, the corner of County Road 13 and Bishop, there's some large equestrian-sized lots out there, Grove subdivision. It is the back end of that subdivision on the northwest corner of that, of that existing subdivision right there.
And that's why that three, that, I think that three foot came so, because I think those are in the city limits, aren't they?
Yes, sir, they are. They're up on your screen, those are, it was a proposed 16-lot subdivision, I believe the South Eight were actually subdivided through that there, yes, sir.
So this, so this right-of-way, it goes off of, of...
Off of Bishop.
Bishop Road going north.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So it's, I'm unfamiliar with one of the properties that it goes through, which is, you know, a large 12-acre property with a barn and a ranch house. It's a very, you know, pastoral, rural feeling property that you wouldn't expect to have. The description from the homeowner, so this was an easement that was used occasionally for somebody to go hunt or fish, this is a big change from that in character.
There'll be three approximately one acre, one acre lots that is being proposed with a large, almost a little over two acre common area where the pond is currently located.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, the layout seems fine, it's the location, I wonder like how frequently do we approve subdivisions that are accessed via a dirt road of going across somebody else's property? That seems, that really struck me as an unusual condition.
The only way for them to not be going across a dirt road would be to have the owner that is, who owns the easement, agree or pay for a paved road or another, come to some sort of agreement amongst themselves to improve that easement that is currently there.
But our requirement to have subdivisions accessed by a paved road is not intended to force people to pay easements on their properties, it's intended for subdivisions to be located on paved roads.
Right, well, in that, in that case, looking, all the property that the airport is on and several parcels that are included in this map would never be able to be subdivided unless you were to pave an easement. And all the roads that we currently have, County Road 13, Bishop Road, those at one time were dirt roads and just an easement that eventually were paved to be serviced. This could be one of the same if the owners of the proposed property tonight and where the easement is going through could reach a mutual agreement to, a maintenance agreement of sorts if they wanted to.
It's a slippery slope.
Well, I guess what Rebecca's saying is, I mean, if we say, no, we don't want to grant the waiver, then what happens?
Then the subdivision does not get approved.
Right.
Then it remains one parcel of land.
Which I guess what she's saying is maybe it's better remaining one parcel of land rather than have, you know, I mean, what if it were...
Seems a strange way to grow, to just...
And, and that's...
Not every land, a piece of land is available.
No, that's... No, that's, and that's at your, at your guys' discretion. That's a planning commission to make that decision. This parcel being south of 32 that is out there, this is one of the odd parcels that is in the county. In this picture, it just happens to have zoned property around it via the airport. You get outside of the airport and these few R1 zonings, you're in completely unincorporated Baldwin County. But that's, Commissioner, that is up, that is your decision to make.
Commissioners, if I can interject, we had a similar situation probably two meetings ago, similar situation, unzoned piece of property within Baldwin County. Baldwin County Highway Department, their subdivision review division granted a waiver. And so understand that that means, you know, I'm not speaking for the county, but I think the acknowledgement is, is that they understand if there's ever a desire by a future landowner to demand that they have a publicly maintained paved road created, they would take that up with the Baldwin County Highway Department, not the city of Fairhope. So factor that, keep that under consideration, Commissioners, and also that we have approved previous subdivisions of a similar nature where that waiver was required to provide access.
Well, that was my initial question.
But normally those were family where it was, they were going through their own property.
And that's typically what's out there right now, is these were farmland properties that they would pass down, and there was an easement because it was all family.
Okay, Chairman, if I can say, the letter that was provided to you does address the easement. I'm going to read from the email that was received. The letter that the, we received, the applicant is requesting a waiver to Article 5, Section E.3 regarding requirements for paved publicly maintained street. Before granting this waiver, we ask that you determine how the upkeep of the, upkeep of the dirt slash grass road over the existing easement will be maintained so that our burden is not increased. We retain the rights to use the dirt road for accessing our barn and fields, so we want to make sure that it will be well-maintained so our use is not impaired. The adjacent property owners don't have a problem with the use of it, they just want to make sure that it's maintained.
That's another question. How do we do that?
We could not force maintenance on the easement getting to their piece of property. That would be a...
But I guess my point is if I'm a property owner and somebody's got an easement through my property to get to theirs, I understand that. But then, you know, when that becomes, you know, four lots in a minor subdivision, then I've got four people coming through there, and then the back, you know, 40 becomes four more lots, and then that becomes two more lots, and I've got 12 people driving across my property. You know, these are one-acre lots. It's to say that, you know, these three don't become six-acre lots, you know? I mean, at some point, I've got, I'm at six lots, and then at some point, I've got six more houses with 18 cars driving across my property.
Right, no, I absolutely, I absolutely see your point. I do not know how the easement is written for how they're accessing that property now. I don't know what the terms of that easement are, whether it is for single use for a specific tenant, if it's for that property. You know, there may have to be another easement agreement for them to still continue to use this easement to access those properties with the subdivision. I don't know if Steve Humphrey has any, is any more familiar with the easement or if they've had any conversations about that or not.
Well, maybe we should question him and not you on it then. Because I've seen, I'm all for private property rights and people being able to develop their property, but on the other hand, you know, at their own cost and not at the cost of their neighbor.
Free go lane is an example that I'm thinking of. There's several, I mean, they have easements. It's one lane, and there's probably eight houses on this lane, and it's been family, and then now it's not. And it's, and, you know, the mortgage companies, when you buy or sell, they need that easement as well. So there's got to be some kind of documentation for that easement.
Well, let's go ahead and hear from Steve.
I don't know where you want to start first. Let me just, first off, this is not unusual in the county, and it's in the ETJ. I probably, personally myself, when I worked at the county, approved hundreds of family divisions that were accessed by 30-foot ingress egress easements. So it's not unusual, and I've seen them through other people's property. In this case, there is an existing easement granted to this property owner to access this property through a 30-foot ingress utility easement. There are restricted covenants. I wished I had read them before. I don't know if those covenants have conditions, and they typically do, but I'll have to go back and read, and I don't mind you making that a condition. And if it's not in the restricted covenants, that this property owner has a responsibility to maintain, participate in the maintenance of that, of that easement, it certainly can be made where he is required to. I just can't tell you, Mr. Chairman, if that is there right now. I'd be surprised if it's not, but it does happen, so it'd be worth checking. But I do know that, as was stated, the adjacent property owners don't have a problem with what we're doing. It's just they obviously want to make sure that that road continues to be usable for their purposes also. So you tell me what you want me to, or what questions do you have? This was a family-type division, and that's where they went to when they went to the county first. They did that before they even came to me and got a family, a family division approved through the county. So they obviously did three lots and took the rest of it around the lake and put it in a common area, which is for the benefit of the family, just to be able to have that type setting. So we were under the impression that you had approved access to property before through an easement, so that's, they asked me if I would at least approach it from that position. Obviously, it's a quarter of a mile long. That made it virtually impossible to look at paving a quarter-mile road for a three-lot subdivision, but everybody was fine with it at the time, so that's what brought us here.
Well, do we need to consider, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little fuzzy about the county versus us with garbage trucks or, you know?
You know, bring it all to the street.
So that's just on the homeowners, they bring it all to the street.
Okay.
With your golf cart, you pull it with your golf cart or your truck.
Yeah.
You pull it to the road.
Yeah.
What they do.
We've allowed a few of these, but not a lot of them, and then typically not going through a, you know, third-party disinterested person's property, and so that's my main concern, is just, you know, who's responsible for the upkeep? And, you know, as President of the Single Tax Corporation, I see things all the time where, you know, people forgot stuff at this point, now you've got five neighbors complaining, you know, and, you know, of who's going to pay when it needs to be regraded or gravelled or whatever they want to do to it.
I mean, just to clarify, so you just said you don't remember approving one where the easement ran across somebody else's land? Yeah.
I mean, we have before, but I was saying, as far as a quarter-mile, without any kind of agreement of who's going to take care of it, I don't...
It seems a little...
I mean, I know coming through land where the person owns it themselves and is developing it themselves in the back, but I don't remember a lot of these, Emily, where the easement, where we've done a lot of subdivisions where the easement's come through other people's land.
Do you think the developer would consider taking that into the HOA, I mean, their covenants and restrictions, that they maintain the gravel drive or?
I think that if there's not something in place, now, keep in mind, there's an existing 30-foot quarter-mile-long strip. Now, I need to look at that agreement, because as it stands today, there's one property owner that's accessing through that with the adjacent property owners. If there's not something in place right now for them to participate in the maintenance of that easement, we're going to have to do restrictive covenants because we've got a lake and a common area that, obviously, these three people are going to have to maintain. We can include in that their responsibility to assist in the maintenance of the roadway from Bishop Road up to it.
Does that make sense?
I have one more question, and it's for you, Buford. What are the possibilities, and I just can't remember, if they come back and then want to subdivide these lots into smaller lots, and then we have, what, 12 homeowners are on this one easement?
Well, of course, then the lot sizes and lot widths of the future subdivision must be in compliance with the subdivision regulations as far as 15,000 square feet and 100 feet wide, and as far as access, we have this same conversation again. I would hope that if that, I think, I think it's a reasonable expectation that if there was a future resubdivision, that this matter would be included as a, the resolution to this matter we're discussing now about access would be, would be clearly, clearly indicated in a supporting document to a future subdivision case.
And to also add, it would also have to be approved by Baldwin County, and if it was another family division as this, there'd be another 30-foot easement to access those other lots, and eventually with, this property is not that, if it was larger, I could see, but this smaller piece of property, once you start throwing in several 30-foot easements to get to a piece of property, you run out of real estate rather quickly.
If these lots, the way they're shaped, I think it would be problematic to divide again.
I would be unable to do what you're saying. The county would require the roadway to be paved. It wouldn't be an option for me to even present it. If it's outside, outside of a family division, it would be...
Yeah, the pavement's not what I'm so concerned about. It's more just the upkeep of who's going to do it.
I think we can accomplish that, and I'm...
Not putting the neighbors in a position where they're going to be at each other's throats at some point, and, you know, police going out there because they've got something working against them. Let me go ahead and open up a public hearing at this time. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing if somebody wants to speak to this item. And by the way, I don't think we mentioned that for Paul Davis last time, because Emily knows him, but you need to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is David Love. My wife and I reside at 8847 Oldenburg Drive, which is Lot 4 of the Groves. So our property corners the proposed subdivision property on the southeast corner of the subdivision property and on the northeast corner, I'm sorry, northwest corner of our property. My concern is there's a tremendous amount of stormwater or rainwater runoff when we have just a, I wouldn't even call it a heavy rain event. It flows from the surrounding properties, flows through our bottom, and flows through this corner into the lake. I actually brought a couple of photographs as evidence, if y'all would like to take a look here. This is something that occurred this spring. This is actually the corner in question. So you can see there's quite a volume of water. Our concern is the common area around the lake, if that is improved, if the grade is raised even just a minute amount, that will basically function as a dam and push water back on to not only our property, but the Terence C property and on the Paul Morris property in that corner. So our question is this, in this common area, what are the current and future plans of any development? And if there is development, is this, this future subdivision, are they going to be responsible for providing adequate drainage for the amount of water flow that occurs from, from the surrounding properties on to theirs into the lake?
So to get this right before Stephen goes back, are you concerned about it, how it's drawn now? Are you concerned about it if they come back and wanted to add another house to the common area?
I'm concerned about now, because I do not, I'm not aware of what their plans are for the common area.
Okay.
And I am also concerned for future.
Okay. All right, do you have any other questions to that?
Well, actually, I'd like to point something out, and so y'all can answer this question for me, Commissioners. I'm assuming that when a, when a package is presented and it has the landowners and it has the examples and it has the maps and it has all the information that all of you need to make a decision as to whether or not to approve a subdivision, that y'all are assuming this is correct and accurate. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, if you would pull up the plot plan there, please. Can we do that? Okay, so if we go here to the lower right corner, that lot of the Groves, if you can enlarge that, you will see that they have the owners there as Mark and Suzie Foster. That's incorrect. I purchased that property in 2012 from Wade Wilkins, and Mark and Suzie Foster had never owned that property. So it kind of makes me wonder what other due diligence was missed when they were doing their bidding with the future subdivision.
Well, you might want to check that, because they typically get this off the property tax maps, so...
They may have, but I have my deed of Lot 4.
No, I understand, I'm just saying you might want to check if the tax maps aren't up to date, make sure that your, you know, that your deed was recorded.
It's, yes, sir, I understand, but as I said, I purchased it in '12, and I know Foster's, they've never owned this property.
I see. That's interesting. All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Steve, we had a question. If you don't mind coming back up to the microphone. He was asking about the grade of the common area in the, in the existing lake as to what kind of improvements are going to be done here with this race level at all and possibly back the water up on them.
As far as I know, the developer has no plans of doing anything. That's the whole point of putting the common area around it, and we certainly would not be allowed to fill around that lake and then backwater up on somebody else's property. I mean, he certainly, he could do that today. If the subdivision went away, he could go do that today, and he would still have a legal problem for doing that. These folks would obviously have a, could, could take issue with that, but, but I can just tell you, there are no plans. The only plans were to do three lots for the family division, but there are no plans for doing anything around the lake, so...
Any further questions?
And I have seen many times, by the way, where there are adjacent property owners on the county map that are incorrect. We did pull it from the county records.
Maybe I'm misreading the survey, but I'm just confused about the proximity of Bishop Road. It just looks like it should be much further away.
It is, there are broken, there are broken lines on the lines that go down to Bishop Road.
Okay, I see it now.
Obviously, the map would just be too long if I tried to show it to scale.
Any further questions for the developer? All right, thanks, Steve. Commissioners, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go out on my limb and make a motion. Okay, that's okay. Case SD 1935, I make a motion we approve subdivision conditions. I reference this fact.
Wait, are we going to add a condition about maintenance?
Maintenance with the, in the HOA.
I mean, I don't speak, I might personally, how do you define adequate maintenance of a dirt road to anybody? I mean, I don't...
When you get potholes, who's going to fill the gravel?
Who's going to remove the, what, the tree that falls on it?
It seems like if we, if we waive our requirement to be fronted on a paved road, that we should have some standard that, you know, we should, we should require the maintenance by everyone using the easement, or there should be some method to do that. I'm agreeing with what Holly's saying.
And they have an easement for ingress and egress on that property.
So when they come in with their cement mixers and all their heavy trucks with all that equipment and on these rainy days, and they put some, you know, four-foot-deep potholes in there.
Right.
Are they not required to fix that themselves, or is the person who currently owns the property got to go, you know, about 15 yards of sand and gravel and spend his money to fix the?
The person who has the property can drive beside the easement and not have to worry about the potholes. The only people that have to drive across the potholes are the ones that are creating them.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
The answer to your question is, is it should be covered in the easement. I think what they're talking about is we don't know that for sure as specific as days I have the common area of additional approval. It fairly allocates responsibility for maintenance of that that amounts to a private access that we ordinarily wouldn't approve.
Well, private access is already there.
Not for these two blocks.
It's to the property.
It's like a... But we're changing the nature of the property now.
We're allowing, we're allowing.
I would suggest that if I'm going to go to the trouble of building a house, and that is my only way to get to it, I'm going to take care of it. Now, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe they're going to try to dodge every pothole they create and correct 30 feet width worth of trails that go everywhere. I would like to think that you can trust people to do better than that.
Would it be, would it be reasonable that...
And if you're going, that's right, that's the only way they got to do it.
Well, in that case, why do we even require the people to have owners associations if you just figure that you trust the people now to want to make sure that their water retention's good and then that they're going to mow their park for themselves? And I mean, look at all the owners associations where we can't get them to mow their darn lawns or maintain that. So I'm just saying, you know, trust but verify is all. I don't see where it hurt to just put in the motion even if it doesn't mean a lot that the, that the people are.
If you can define what it is exactly, is it a three-inch-deep pothole or is it a six-inch-deep?
Well, it may be that we're just trying to confirm that which we don't know right now because nobody has clarified the conditions of the easement.
There's a what is. If the current easement was for one owner and it has conditions in that easement, that it is for that sole owner only and this property is subdivided, they would have to create a new easement for the new owners to do that. And then if the owners of the 30-foot easement off of Bishop Road to get to this one property, which is proposed to be three separate lots, they would have to come form an agreement on a new easement, which then would include whatever would make all parties, including that easement, agreeable.
And the one owner that wrote the letter, that was their only request, is who is going to maintain the easement?
Was that, that should be in their current easement now for the one sole owner that is using the easement to locate, to get to this, to the subject property.
Well, we're saying what should, what could and would and what we hope people do and all this. And here we're looking at making a, you know, granting a waiver for something that, you know, here we're going to open up a box again and we're saying, oh, we do this all the time, we've done this all the time, we've done that.
I'm sorry, I made the mistake.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that I don't.
Should we, should we not approve waivers until we've confirmed that there's a, there's just like a mechanism for, I mean, confirm that there's a mechanism for maintenance?
I'd just like to, I would love somebody to make a motion and say they approved subject to a mechanism for main, you know, a mechanism for the new owners' association to maintain the ingress egress. Just something like that is all I'd like to see.
I just, legally, if it's already in there, and so are we asking them to create that or to confirm that it exists?
Just confirm that it exists.
Well, and he's not sure if it's in the covenants and restrictions. If we had some confirmation on that, that would help us a little bit.
I'm just saying, why don't we just approve it subject to them putting it in the covenants and restrictions?
Can you add that for now?
Sure. I can add it. I mean, I don't know how defendable it can be.
Well, if it's not, who cares? Well, then. Then it doesn't. But I mean, at least we shot them, you know, we fired the cannon over the ball and done our best to try it.
Well, we're trying to set a precedence to protect future growth and the people that are going to be purchasing these properties that everybody, we can't assume anything anymore.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Mr. Watson to make a statement. I think we can get moving past this.
Well, we were just talking, the possibility is to table it so we can vet what kind of easement exists and how the allocation of rights, if any, are provided for in that easement. The problem is there are more than 30 days to the next meeting. This is a minor, so it's preliminary and final at the same time. You can only table for 30 days because this would be approved by operation statute on the 30th day. So if you table it to the next meeting and pick it back up, that would be beyond 30 days. We need the affirmative consent developed on the record to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision subject to conditions within the easement for maintenance.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
I kind of mumbled it, I'm sorry.
Next item on the agenda, SD 1936. This is a multiple occupancy project, a six-unit multiple occupancy project on the corner of Fairhope Avenue and Church Street. And that will be, if you want to just state for the, in the microphone while you're accusing yourself, please.
Sure, am I accusing myself or abstaining from voting?
Abstaining.
Yeah, abstaining from voting because I'm the architect on the project. But I believe I can provide additional information if there are questions.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Attorney, you said it perfectly. This is a six-unit multiple occupancy project approval. It's currently remodeling an existing historic building to house up to six units located on the corner of Fairhope Avenue and North Church Street at 301 Fairhope Avenue. It's approximately .2 acres, very well known as the Fairhope Hardware Store. There on the map, you can see the zoning and the aerial of the store. The building itself is not going to be changing. It is merely cosmetics and structural upgrades on the inside to accommodate the additional units. And the approval is for six units. The known unit count is not for sure yet. It could be five units. It could be less than six, but that is the maximum that they know they would possibly want to have in there. It is all for commercial, there is not residential, so it is not a mixed-use project. And it's located in the central business district, therefore there are slightly different standards and requirements than a normal MOP would be outside of the central business district. Just a few comments, the parking and green space was not required due to it being in the central business district and that there were no dwelling units, therefore no parking. And it's a pre-existing building and in the central business district, you're required to build to the build-to lines. The sidewalk widths are met. Stormwater and drainage will remain the same. There is currently a drain pipe that travels down the side of the wall and then enters the sidewalk there from about 10 feet or 12 feet up in the air. The current plan is to continue that pipe down to where it is still sheet-flowing and go towards the alley into the city stormwater system. The main gist of the approving or reviewing of this was to make sure there were adequate utilities to service the different occupants that were going to be in the building for the number of occupants. We have met a couple of times with the applicants and with the Fairhope Utilities to make sure that the placement of meters were in areas that were within code and that all service was available, locations of water and gas in the right-of-way and where the service would have to come from. The property being on a corner gave two different points of access possibly for the different utilities and we're able to work out with the utility department and the engineer, engineers on the project to make sure they know where we would be pulling service from and to be able to design the building adequately. As I said, the applicant, Richard Peterson and Richard Johnson, Public Works Director, have been working together to coordinate this project with ongoing city projects. We're well, we're well aware of, there is the alley project that has been talked about. They've been coordinating, going to coordinate their efforts of construction, whether there's improvements in the alley or trying to get utilities into alley with that same alley project to make sure that there are no different, no conflicts at the time. So that's recommendation is approval of SD 1936, the Fairhope Hardware MOP with the following conditions. And this is more just for an FYI, speaking into the record, that any substantial deviation from the approved submittals during construction or failure to provide for traffic control, safety, environmental protection controls, or best management practices in restoration of the site shall be grounds for immediate suspension of the preliminary plat approval and issuance of a stop work order. This being on the corner, it's a high-traffic area. They'll be coordinating with Eric Cortinas on the construction side of this and with the police department, knowing if there's going to be any, any use of any portion of the parking, that it can be done at times of day, that it's less traffic, less volume, and it can be done before any of the businesses are open or possibly after, that is to avoid as much conflict as possible. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. The architect is here with us tonight, along with Larry Smith, the engineer of record, to answer any questions.
I've got one question, just more of a housekeeping, just so I know to explain it to, if somebody asks me, which I don't currently. What triggered the multiple occupancy review on this?
They went for more than two units. And it's, whether it's a separate buildings, whether it's contiguous buildings or just units inside of a building, if you build an office complex, this one's a little more unique in that it was an existing building, but it was being transformed from one unit into more than two units. Triggered the MOP.
And then they will not have a site plan review due to the fact that it's an existing building?
Yes, sir. That's right.
All right. I will go ahead, is this a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. Larry, do you have anything to add to this?
Not really. I'm just here to ask if I have any questions in the case that Rebecca had to actually leave the room. I just want to make sure somebody's here representing the project.
Okay.
But there's not really much civil to it, but they needed a civil engineers in the package, so I'm here to Rebecca, pocket answer.
I like the old paint there. Are they still working on a, on a grant, a historic grant?
It's been actually, it was ranked number one or number two in the state of Alabama, but it's been approved as a, as a historic property and with the federal and state agencies. So I wish they'd included some of the pretty pictures of the building underneath the stucco that it's a really cool, really cool building.
Well, cool.
It's a lot of windows that'll be revealed.
Yay!
Yeah.
Ingress, egress, easement, we got to worry about it.
There's a dirt road.
We've got a dirt road.
A gravel road. We've got a drainage ditch running down the back and, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was the other project.
Don't you want to put some parking in the right-of-way, Larry?
Yeah.
Well, if there are no further questions for the, I guess we do have a quorum, Emily said, as far as even with Rebecca abstaining or. Okay, cool. So we're good on that. All right, I'll entertain a motion if no more further questions exist.
I make a motion to approve Case SD 1936 Hardware, Fairhope Hardware, with, approve with conditions.
I have a motion to approve subject to the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one. All right. Item F, UR 1920, we have an 1152, 11 review for 650 feet of underground optic cable to be run throughout Twin Beach Estates subdivision. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So this is your, a new development that is just breaking ground. There's approximately, I think, three houses that are under development. This is just our AT&amp;T's routine, coming in to go ahead and lay their conduit and their fiber before the construction of all the houses are in the neighborhood. They'll be doing a lot of just road crossings. So when they go to service the neighborhood, they have access and don't have to bore or disturb any of the manicured lawns once houses are built. There's a copy of the plat for Twin Beach Estates that was approved and they're just going to be road crossings in a few areas for the 650 feet of piping. Our standard general comments for all right-of-way work that's done in the city of Fairhope, no open trenches shall be allowed, directional boring in sensitive areas. They're getting in at the beginning, so we don't have to worry about these sensitive areas as of now, which will help the building department and right-of-way inspector on that. They shall comply with all the different federal ordinances. Staff recommends approval of UR 1920, conditional upon that the applicant shall follow the general comments related to the utility work as stated in the staff report and the applicant and applicant's contractor shall follow the right-of-way installation permitting and work procedures documented provided by the building official.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't see anybody here from AT&amp;T. So unless, Mr. Pope, you haven't taken a job that you haven't told us about, have you?
Nope, I haven't.
Okay, in that case, there's nobody here from AT&amp;T. I always look at Richard Peterson for these, just to make sure that you don't have any issues and if not.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this request of permit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, last item on the agenda is under old slash new business, Greeno Road Corridor Overlay District. There we go. We've got IT in the back switching, switching gears for us for a second. Greetings, Commissioners. We are Tuesday going to have a work session to, a special meeting to discuss the Greeno Road Corridor. Prior to that, just to take a couple of minutes to present a couple of things we've, we've done in the, in the previous week to help clarify some, some rumors and misconceptions of what's there. We've created a new section on our website and just for, for the YouTube viewers, I'm going to go through this real quick. If you go to our planning department and under Planning and Development and then Planning and Zoning and then Publications and Forms, there's a new section here for ongoing projects. And the Greeno Road Corridor is the only project there. We've broken out some of past presentations into a quicker to access form, such as the frequently asked questions, the timeline, the first code amendment that was presented. You'll see three new links there. For example, the example diagrams, this is just kind of showing what a typical lot and setbacks are currently. And then there is another, as it would be. So setbacks aren't changing, just really the location and siding of the building. So we were going to put a few more examples within this document. There is also a list of questions and comments that we've received as staff. These are, will be kind of the things that we, we might need to touch on, on Tuesday. If there's any additional ones, we'll be happy to, to add those to the list. I think staff is prepared to offer some solutions, but again, as that meeting is, is a little more conversational, we'll be happy to look at any other options that may come up. And then the final document that is there is, is a map study of, and I'm going to skip over here instead of that loading. There's a map study of each district that kind of looks in its entirety and I'll, I'll explain this in one and not go through the whole presentation, but it'll look at each district and it looks at how many parcels total and then it breaks out how many are actually in the city limits. So in this case, 88 total, 14 in the city limits. And then it'll look at how many properties are affected by pulling away residential. And we've kind of separated PUDs from this because they have their own process of review. So that is a, you'll kind of see how many properties are truly affected and exactly which ones. These, each slide here is an active map, so people can come, go in and look at, at their properties, see whether it's affected or not. Anything that just has an outline, I'm assuming my mouse, mouse can be seen on videos, anything that's just an outline is not affected. If it has a color like this, it is affected by the overlay district. Same with North Village District. I'm going to show something here on, on this one and kind of flip through real quick on these next two slides just to get to the setbacks.
Can you clarify why the ones that are not affected are not affected?
Number one, if they're not in the city, they're not affected by the overlay district. And then we also pull out single-family residential are not impacted by the, by the overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
So what we are, townhomes, there's a couple of residential multifamily that are impacted.
But if those residential homes did request to be zoned commercial, then they would be subject to it.
Absolutely.
Which is one of the big reasons that, you know, I'm a proponent of this is so we can, you know, some of these people that have single-family dwellings in areas that don't make sense, that we feel like we can rezone them with a plan that's not going to, you know, hurt the overall aesthetics of that area.
And I think that's been the challenge, reviewing some old cases and speaking to staff about the history. There's a roadblock to getting some approved that may want to, residential properties, because they might not like what, what a base zone provides, the options, where this gives a little more comfort level for planning commission and then also council to approve some of those projects.
We've tried to rezone nothing with the exception of PUDs from residential on Guino until something like this passes. And we have, you know, rezoned a few here and there.
Right.
But, but not very many.
And there's some lots that won't meet the acreage requirements for a PUD. So this gives planning commission and council some other options and comfort levels to possibly rezone some of those. So, but real quick on this, within this district, staying in this district, what we've also done is taken a couple of examples of the affected properties. So in, in this case, we've got a B2 and B4 business zoning. And we've kind of marked the existing property or setback lines on the map on those two. And then the next tab, you'll see that. next tab, you'll see that setback, in actuality, this is a build-two line, but in effect, it becomes the new setback. So you'll see the black line there. And in essence, what this means is they, property owners have an additional three feet to design within. So their buildable area actually becomes larger in both cases. Each district is here, but I can tell you without one possible exception, everyone is staying, their buildable area is staying equal, or they're gaining a buildable area. The one exception is a few M1s, which is just hard to define because their setback becomes what their neighbors are, an average of the adjacent properties within a certain distance. So that one's kind of hard to define for this. But the next slide will be under the menu bar here. So that goes through every district with the same consistency. I'll be happy to run through this, but we can save this fully Tuesday. Those are on our website. If there's any, no other questions, we'll be prepared for Tuesday's discussion. Yeah, and please look through this, directors, and study it and have your own knowledge about it. I've heard an unbelievable amount of pushback against this, and every person that I've talked to with the pushback has been concerned about things that aren't even in the, aren't even in there, you know, concerned about the 400-foot setback and things such as that. And I've had a few people I've talked to that just agree to disagree. One in particular just doesn't like the idea of the parking being required in the rear. He likes the idea of parking in the front. But that's, you know, one of the components of this that has to do with how much asphalt you see. If the parking is in the front, you've got that much more asphalt, and you can go look at one of the new doctor's offices that has, you know, that has a parking in the front as well as a service road, and look at how much more asphalt that is than if there was a little bit of green and the building had been pulled forward a little bit more. So just please, you know, get educated on this. People ask you questions or buttonhole you on the street that, you know, that if people are against it, at least they're hopefully against it for, you know, reasons and not because of misunderstandings.
Sure, sure.
I think the staff's put a lot of time in this, and I think, you know, with some tweaking, I think it could be a very good ordinance would help accomplish what we're trying to accomplish of not allowing Greeno Road to look like Airport Boulevard, something that 95% of the population has agreed with always. So how do we do that? Well, we make plans that accomplish that. And, you know, when you do that, not everything is perfect for every single person, but, you know, hopefully it helps the community as a whole. Thank you. Chairman, and I will say that we did speak to our predecessor who initiated, I think, part of this idea, and, you know, he said it best, we can do nothing and expect some change, or we can try to accomplish something, you know, and actually impact Greeno in this area. So I hope we can come to some conclusion. There was one other point of clarification. There was some expectations that there is an amended proposal already prepared, and that's not the case. Staff is going to bring the questions and some solutions. And then throughout that, will guide us in what planning, where our directive is from there, we will put up a proposal to bring back to you whenever October, or if we need to continue that conversation, we'll do that as well. And I'd like to run the meeting on Tuesday more as a work session than a venting session if people want to...
What's the date of that?
This coming Tuesday.
September 10th.
You know, if people want to vent on every problem they've had with the city for the last 50 years, I don't think that'll be the right venue for it. I think, you know, I'd like this to more just be a, you know, a session to deal with this, and then, you know, we bring it up and vote on it. Where it lands, it lands, but... And I think that's, the directives that were given, where we're kind of, this came about by citizen input, and whenever October rolls around, if that's when we bring a proposal, we're gonna bring that proposal, so we want it to be as good as it can be. So that discussion, valuable input would be very welcome. Where are we meeting on Tuesday?
In this room.
In here.
In this room.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. And Mr. Chairman, did you want to invite the chairman to elaborate just a moment on the ground rules for the meeting?
Well, you know, we've had these meetings in, over in the library before, and one thing that works out well there is have a roving person with the microphone, and any questions, concerns, anything that somebody says, you know, the microphone goes to them, but then if they start talking about, you know, in 1935, the, you know, something happened, then, you know, thank you, and go on to the next person, so that you don't have, you know, one person hogging the meeting with 25 minutes of valuable time, talking about something that's as peripheral as to the ordinance itself. So that's the main thing. I mean, I've let people in the past meetings, you know, pretty much talk, you know, as much as they've wanted to, but in this meeting, you know, it doesn't need to be five hours, and we need to, you know, stick to the facts and only the facts. You know, I'm not gonna be real patient with a lot of people talking about 400-foot setbacks.
Is there a microphone police person?
Yeah, I don't know, but we'll figure that out. But we're gonna try to, you know, keep it more to a, you know, I like to keep it more to a work session and working with the ordinances and changes, and how do you think this will work, and, you know, have a person say something, have the, you know, staff comment on it. Because I think there's some tweaks. Like one question I have is that for, you know, if somebody's property's 390 feet and they have 10 feet in and then 100 feet out, does that really need to be in the corridor? Do they really need to have the, you know, parking, you know, I think that, you know, there's some things like that, that I've got some questions that I'd like a, you know, good honest explanation to, you know, without people yelling at people and snickering and all the things that go along with the meeting, so...
We haven't had that much, and I regret I missed the last meeting, but in the meetings where I've attended, this has come up, we haven't had that much time or any time to discuss it amongst ourselves or with staff. It's been more just a presentation that we've had to really rush through, and then we moved on. So I hope we have some time to...
For sure.
...discuss it.
And please do, you know, read there and have your notes ahead of time and things to turn into, you know, staff and email staff, you know, back and forth about issues that you have, you know, give them a call or an email about issues that you have.
I have a question, just so that I can prepare myself while I'm studying a little bit in it. What is the opposition that we're facing the most? What is the, if I can try to think of, because I talk about it a lot to people in the public, and I tell them to get involved and come up with solutions, not so much just combative all the time, more on a positive note of how, how can you, what are some great ideas that you can help to improve? What are you seeing that is the top three things that maybe we can...
I think there's two ways to look at that. There's the questions we've received directly.
Right.
And then there's the rest of it that really is not a conversation people are having with staff, that we can't really, this list is a, kind of consolidates the concerns that we've received. I think, I really don't have a clear picture of what all the concerns are that we're not having with staff, but for the most part, I think it's fair to say drive-throughs are kind of one of those, and it's understanding of maybe the buffer sizes and is it taking away, is it more restrictive than what's currently in place. That's kind of the two main ones.
That's the two main things. And also, commissioners, I think there's some, and this is certainly not a criticism of citizens at all, it's just, it's just a byproduct of a regulatory environment, is there's a lot of confusion between what we're doing here as an amendment to the zoning ordinance versus the landscape ordinance that is a standalone ordinance. And so there's a confusion about what document governs what. There's also some confusion about existing non-conformities, and that this is going to restrict someone from trimming a tree in their yard. There's some comments, there's some misunderstanding to that extent. And, you know, we've emphasized numerous times that the single-family residential zones are excluded. There's also, I think, some confusion about unzoned properties, which are obviously not applicable, because this is a function of the zoning ordinance. So I think so.
And I do think there is one other that didn't make it on the list, but we have talked to, that warrants clarification. I think there's some, I don't, confusion on potential annexation. And just to be clear, I know of no mechanism where the city can force annexation without input. We're, I don't think the city of Fairhope's coming to take, you know, land. I think we would love to have annexation voluntarily coming in if it works for both parties, but I don't, there's a process, any way I see annexation happening, there's a process where someone has an opportunity to have input at that stage. Well, most of what I've heard has been concerns about drive-throughs, a few concerns about not having the parking being allowed up front. And then those are most of the actual, you know, a lot of the other things have just been, you know, people out of the city limits who are, you know, concerned about it, that aren't even affected by it. And I think that one thing that we need to, you know, remind the people of with the residential lots is that even though they're not affected by this, it's really them that we're doing this for, more than anyone, so that, you know, we've heard so many people come up so many times and say, you know, that Greeno Road is not a road to live on with a single-family residential lot. So the main reason we're doing this is in the past, we've, you know, allowed people primarily to redevelop into PUDs, and even one of the opponents was talking about how nice most of the things that have been done since then have been. Well, look at them, they're PUDs. I mean, look at, you know, Publix, when you drive by Publix, you know, no matter what you think about it, from the Greeno Road perspective, it's pretty attractive. And if you compare that to big lots, you know, that was done before we really required much of anything. And then if you look at, you know, the Piggly Wiggly subdivision with Subway, that was after we had Corridor 98 at least come in and some, you know, a few restrictions with some trees. And if you look, there's almost, you know, there's a progression. And the question is, what do we want in Fairhope? What do we want our standards to be? Do we want it to be Airport Boulevard? Do we want it to be like the big lots in Fairhope that, you know, subdivision built in the early 70s? Do we want it to be like the Piggly Wiggly built in the 80s? Or do we want, you know, things to look more like the Publix Shopping Center, where you've got, you know, more green space and, you know, what do we want our standard to be? And like Wayne Dias said, if we do nothing, you know, we're just gonna get the lowest common denominator. If we affect a few changes and have double-sided, you know, buildings, buildings that have a front so they look attractive from Greeno and the parking in the rear, then, you know, it'll look much, much better from a, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint. And then some of these people that live in residential houses that aren't real suited to be residential areas, that don't have three acres, will be a lot, feel a lot more comfortable to rezone their land commercial. And that's the main reason I think that we're doing this.
Commissioners, just a quick final statement here, and in this setting, we can make this a little bit, we can kind of underscore this, is that let's pretend for a moment that there was not a development moratorium on Greeno, and let's pretend for a moment that a visual preference survey never occurred. City of Fairhope has embraced, and I struggle to remember the exact endeavor that the city adopted, but basically is told the general public that we want to be a walkable community. And furthermore, we have a comprehensive plan that was updated in 2015 that went through an elaborate public engagement process. Both of those documents basically are pointing toward this Greeno Road corridor. They do not specifically state exactly how you do it, but basically state that, basically, the comprehensive plan charges and almost demands that the city, staff, and elected and appointed officials come up with some type of endeavor to create a more walkable community. And that's why you have the new urbanism influence on buildings closer to the right-of-way with parking in the rear, because now things are on a more human, walkable scale. So Beaufort King's philosophical statement for the evening, but I appreciate the opportunity to say that.
Well, and that's one of the things that Beaufort had to educate me on. I was concerned that in a lot of these areas, the setbacks are actually shrinking about five feet. And that just seems so counterintuitive. Now, you know, you have the buffer that, you know, Corridor 98's already done on top of it, but, you know, I had to be educated on that that's trying to bring the sidewalks up closer to the buildings, have an attractive front of a building and make it more walkable. And that's what we're, that's what we're looking to accomplish, so...
How many people did we have that participated in the study, the...
Visual preference survey.
Visual preference study.
And, Mr. Keller, I apologize, I can't think, I can't tell you off the top of my head. And I can say that the version that I participated in personally, I'd say about three-quarters of this room was full on one of the sessions, the session in which I participated. But I can't recall the exact number, because that was also available online.
Well, I took the online, I guess, survey, and I was just wondering what our, if there was any kind of printout of data or stats on that that we could share...
Absolutely.
...with the public, so they know that, because a lot of them don't even recall that we did this, or where we got a lot of our information. I would like to kind of bring that back up.
So commissioners, what I would, and that's a great question, Commissioner, and I appreciate that very much. The, what I would direct commissioners and the public, anyone that's with us or watching, is that the actual presentation from Christian Proys, who was the landscape architect that conducted it on behalf of the city, his presentation includes all the data, all the slides, all the data which we then presented to, I know we presented to the city council, I do not recall if we presented the entire slideshow, but that is on the city's website for download.
Well, and also something prior to that, when we updated the comprehensive plan, we had three meetings that each had about 400 people in attendance. And people would put dots on what they thought looked better, the type of development they thought looked better. And in that, you know, one of them was how would you like Greeno Road to develop, and what kind of buildings. And it was very similar to the visual preference survey. And out of the 1,200 people, the, you know, you had the 95% of the people that liked, you know, the attractiveness of the buildings up front with the parking in back versus the parking in the front. But that's just natural. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it doesn't take a genius to show you where Rolls Royce looks better than a, you know, Hyundai, but it's just, but, you know, the people that come out the loudest, you know, the people that feel like they're personally, you know, affected, and, you know, the majority of the people that aren't, you know...
And commissioners, another thing to refresh your memory about, obviously, that was a lengthy slideshow that we saw at the August 5th Plan Commission meeting. That was 55 slides. It was a lot of information, and we tried to go through it very methodically, but also respect the time of this commission and the public. But what you'll recall is during the slides, we did have some cross-references back to the visual preference survey and the comprehensive plan. So we actually took screenshots of certain pages, and so, and explained, you know, this comprehensive plan tells us to do this, here's how we're doing it. Comprehensive plan says this, here's what we're doing. So that information is also in there. And of course, you know, that was part of the agenda of the last meeting, which is still available for download for anyone interested in reading.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes, sir.
I have an item, I have all this...
Yeah, come on. Sure, come on up.
The visual preference study is on the website.
Okay.
We can make that a little more convenient, put that in under the Greeno Road links that we...
That would be great.
Yeah, the new section that we just saw today, that'd be, where it's easier to find.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Just two minutes of your time. My name is Mark Rochetko. I'm a member of the Bay Meadows subdivision, Derby Lane. I spoke to you once before. Thank you for your service for the community. I know you do a thankless job, so I'm trying to make this as positive as possible. I want to describe some frustration I've had with the process and a proper notice and public participation. And I just want to describe it to you.
Look, if you could keep it to about a minute, we have a meeting each year for, you know, for this specifically.
Yeah, I understand. And it's real short, it's one page. Yeah. Developers usually have 60 days to, have to provide their notice 60 days in advance to the commission for a deadline. But the public is only given five days' notice before the meeting of the proposal that's coming up. You know, I just don't, you know, the reason they've been given is, well, we follow state law, and we don't want to give out the wrong information, that kind of stuff. I just think that's bare minimum. I think we can do better than that. I've seen some proposals today... I've seen some proposals today, I was watching this Greeno Road thing, now they've got it on the website. I think that's a great idea. I think we need to move in that type of direction. We were notified of a subdivision on July 22nd, a Live Oak subdivision, and we were told we had until Friday, August 2nd, for comments to be considered, but we found out that the staff recommendation was released on Thursday before the deadline. So we don't think that seemed fair to us. Anyways, the plats that were given to us, that were sent out to us in the mail, were not the same plats that were presented at the meeting that Monday night on August 5th. So we don't think the community was fairly notified with an incomplete proposal. I've just got two more sentences. I realize that this might be a surprise to some members, so, you know, I do appreciate your time. I think we can do better than this, and so, you know, I just wanted to put this on the record, and I have three letters that I wanted to present on the record. It's the plat that was presented at the meeting, and the one they sent to me, and then a letter that goes along with it.
If you give those to Emily, she'll put them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to clarify something very briefly. That case was not a plat, that it was a conditional annexation, and this Plan Commission did not consider a subdivision plat. Just want to be very, very clear that that is a separate process that will occur at a future time, should the conditional annexation be approved by the city council. So just wanted to go on record in making that very, very clear. No plat approval process has occurred yet, at yet. That was whatever supporting documents were included with the conditional annexation.
That one not a PUD?
Sir?
That one was a PUD, wasn't it?
Yes, PU-D, PU-D.
It's already in the city. We might be talking about the wrong, we may not be talking on the same page. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something, just really quickly? If anybody's watching and was going through the Where to Find the Visual Preference survey, it's under, it is under that first page of Fairhope Planning Publications and Forms and Environmental Projects and Programs, and it looked like about 800 respondents participated, but there may be more, but it was, it was pretty easy to find.
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 6:30.
6:30.